Okay, good evening. I want to welcome everyone to the Longdale City Council along with the Longdale Public Finance Authority Regular Meeting. I'm gonna ask the city clerk, city clerk to give the roll call.
Mayor Proten Suarez?
Here.
Councilmember Osborne?
Here.
Councilmember Reed?
Here.
Councilmember Kearney?
Here.
Mayor Paul Miles?
Here.
All members present.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'm gonna add, um, Mayor Proten Suarez to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, madam. Next up is our public safety report. Let's call on Sergeant Nick for our public safety report.
Yes, sir. Okay, good evening, good evening, mayor and, uh, members of council. This is gonna cover August seventeenth through September seventh. On August seventeenth, new time, due to a recent increase in vehicle thefts, Deputy Ruiz was monitoring traffic at one hundred and sixty-first Street and Freeman Avenue. He observed an ATV, an all-terrain vehicle, fail to stop for a posted sign. After contacting the rider and due to conflicting statements, it was determined the ATV was stolen. Driver was placed under arrest for possession of a stolen vehicle and theft by false pretenses. Transported and booked at South Los Angeles Station. On August twenty-fourth, at twelve-thirty PM, Deputy Velazquez responded to a hit-and-run traffic accident at one-four-two-five-three Greville Avenue. The call stated the driver had fled the scene on foot. Witnesses gave the deputy a description and he was relayed to assisting units. A male matching the driver was detained a short distance away who spontaneously stated that he was the driver. During a search of the vehicle, a backpack was recovered containing a loaded handgun. The driver also admitted to being an active gang member. The driver was placed under arrest for possession of a loaded firearm, not registered to the owner, participation in criminal street gang, and hit-and-run. He was transported and booked at South Los Angeles Station. On August twenty-ninth, at four AM in the morning, Deputy Camper conducted a traffic stop at one hundred and forty-seventh Street and Hawthorne Boulevard for tent windows. After a short investigation, both occupants were detained pending a narcotics investigation. The driver was placed under arrest for methamphetamine. There was a backpack discovered near the passenger which contained an unloaded handgun. A check of both occupants revealed both were convicted felons. Due to conflicting statements regarding the handgun, both were placed under arrest for felony possession of a firearm and possession of a controlled substance. They were transported and booked at the station. On September fourth, at three fifteen in the afternoon, Parking Control Officer Lua issued a parking citation for handicap parking at L. Supermarket on Hawthorne Boulevard. The owner of the vehicle confirmed to PCO Lua and demanding to speak to him. Avoiding confrontation, uh, Lua remained inside his vehicle when the suspect kicked his door, causing minor damage. The suspect then, uh, drove away. Assisting units detained the suspect a short distance away and PCO Luna positively identified the suspect who had damaged his vehicle. Driver was placed under arrest for vandalism and transported booked at, uh, South Los Angeles Station. Um, this concludes the report, the, uh, public safety report. I have a few things I'd like to say about the protesters. Um, at our main station, if you haven't seen it on the news or YouTube, they arrested twelve, uh, last night and seven the night before. Supposed to go on tonight and through the rest of the week. All their arrests are from people that live out of state. So, uh, it's not even the, uh, the people there. The detectives keep questioning the arrestees and they're slowly, you know, getting more information to find out who's paying these people. Uh, hopefully, uh, they can get something and, uh, some prosecution will follow. As for Longdale, I want to add that, uh, even stuff that's going on at the station has no bearing on the coverage for, uh, Longdale. And if we do have any problems, we have all our other stations that will respond, plus we have, uh, the South Bay Mutual Task Force that will, uh, help us. And we have them, uh, we have extra units in the city just, uh, eyeballing our critical facilities and everything like City Hall and some of the big buildings. And, uh, of course, the Longdale Service Center itself. Um, that's gonna be it. Any questions, uh, I can answer them.
Well, good work, Sandy.
Okay, thank you for that report on Sergeant Nick's question. Okay, seeing enough, I want to thank you on Sergeant Nick for your public safety report. Let's move to communications. Let's ask, um, the official of to give us any more communications that we might have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, one, uh, public comment, uh, ready for debate, um, it's from Mike Don, board member of the South Bay Bicycle Coalition. Good evening, uh, Mayor Paul Miles, City Council and staff. My name is Mike Don and I'm a board member of the South Bay Bicycle Coalition, the SBDC. And a long-time resident of the South Bay area. Eleven years ago, the SBDC led the effort obtained a dedicated grant, plus grant, and created the first set in city bicycle master plan. Adopted by the councils of Longdale, Torrance, Cardena, El Segundo, Manhattan, Hermosa, and Redondo Beaches. Since that time, there have been many successes, but there is a long way to go to meet the commitments made by the councils. Statistics show that the pandemic and related economic hardships have resulted in more bike ridership out of necessity for commuting, commuting, and more economically removed, and for outdoor fitness and recreation. Sadly, this has also resulted in more accidents where bike routes are not clearly indicated, example, lack of bike lanes or sharrows. It creates less bike compliance with street laws and safe practices. The need for implementing more of the bike master plan is therefore more important now than ever before. This pandemic has also created streams on budgets. Yet some of the fundamentals of road striping and applying sharrows can be done with almost no mental funds to regular road projects. With the expected continued hot weather providing safe east-west routes to the beach for barely half the people of Longdale. It should also be noted that the bike lanes called out in the MVP have minimal impacts to motors. The plan was created by one of the top engineering and planning organizations in the country after dozens of community meetings to determine citizens' regular routes and needs. I think we all agree safety of paramount to pedestrians, bicycles, and first, and after nine years, we are asking the city to take action and begin implementation of bike lanes called out in the MVP. And that was approved in two thousand and eleven. The plan had a prioritized list of recommended, recommended efforts for each city, detached here and prioritized list for Longdale. I've attached the accident information regarding incidents reported in Longdale while illuminating. We also know that many incidents are not reported, so this list is not complete. Thank you for your time and dedication to improving the lives of Longdale citizens. And that ends public comments.
Okay, that's public comments. Uh, let's see if there's any, um, responsive public comments. Um, we'll just go on randomly if anyone has anything they want to add to the public comment. If there was just one, seeing none, we will close the public comment and comments from the council. Proceed to item F, which is the consent calendar. What is the pleasure of this body concerning?
Mayor, this is Councilman Kearney. I'm making a motion.
Yes, sir.
It's written.
Uh, good, good evening, mayor and the city council member. This is Kahono, the interim director. Can I request to, uh, discuss about item number four of the consent items? And I would like to make a small clarification regarding the items. And I would like to be able to discuss with you after you, uh, move forward with the approval of the consent items.
Okay, is this, isn't this something you want to clarify before we vote on the consent calendar?
Uh, specifically for item number four?
Okay, why don't you go ahead and give us your comments, uh, so we have those before we vote on the consent calendar?
Oh, thank you. Good evening, mayor and members of the city council. In reference to the staff report adopting the resolution number CC two zero zero nine hyphen zero four seven. In as personally, the original resolution that was submitted to the city council was submitted without the prior approval of the city attorney. And subsequently, staff made a minor revision to the resolution and was submitted to the city council through the city clerk's office. And staff requesting that the substitution of the resolution presented to you tonight. And also just for clarification and for the record, the funding that we are contemplating under this agreement. It actually is for the LRSP project, which will be discussed as an item number thirteen on the agenda tonight. And it is actually as a state-funded project and it's not federal aid project. And with that, I conclude my report and I'll be happy to answer any question that you may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that report. Uh, are there any, um, questions on that, um, revision that will make part of the, um, part of the record and part of the motion? Is there any, um, discussion on that?
No.
Okay, let's go ahead with the, with, with the motion, um.
Okay, this is Councilman Kearney, mayor. I will make a motion to accept the consent calendar.
This is Councilman Reed. I'll second it.
Okay, so the motion is made by Councilmember Pat Kearney and Councilmember Reed second the motion that we adopt the consent calendar. Um, is there any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, let's have the, um, the vote, um, on the motion on the, on the consent calendar.
Okay, for the consent calendar, Mayor Proten Suarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osborne?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Kearney?
Yes.
Mayor Paul Miles?
Yes.
Motion passed, please, five zero.
Okay, thank you, um, sir. We're now at item number eleven. Let's have the report concerning the coronavirus issues.
Is Michael here?
Who's gonna give that report?
Yes, that should be, uh, Mr. Mayor, this is Kevin Chen. It should be Michael. Um, I'm not sure.
Maybe got kicked off. Um, so we could hold that until he gets kicked, um, rejoin us and proceed with, um, um, portfolio. Is he, is, is he on now?
He's trying to call back in right now.
Okay, well, let's, let's, um, have him to hold. We'll just proceed to twelve and we'll back up to three eleven once, um, he establishes, um, connection. Let's go to, um, item number twelve.
Mr. Mayor, uh, it's Kevin Chen again. Since, uh, Michael is not connected, um, number twelve is also his item, so if we could move on to number thirteen?
That's two thirteen then. Okay, we'll roll with it. Let's do thirteen.
Uh, good evening, mayor and. Good evening, mayor and city council members. This is Kahono, the interim director of Public Works. And, um, the staff report before you tonight is for the award of the professional service agreement to I-Tourist Incorporated of Irvine. For the local road safety plan study. And staff submitted grant application to Caltrans in December of two thousand and nineteen for the local road safety plans. And subsequently, in, on January twenty-twenty, staff received the approval of the grant in the amount of eighty thousand dollars. And the scope of service for this project is to do a signage inventory throughout the whole city. Uh, what I mean by the signage inventory means, uh, everything including the sub-signs, no parking signs, directory signs, any regulatory signs. That, to make sure that those signs meet the MUTCD, the Manual Uniform Traffic Control Device. In, in terms of the size, the shape, and the reflectivity and et cetera. And specifically, the sign, um, is concentrated within the school area or any within government, uh, building area. And a lot of existing signs that we have right now does not meet the MUTCD. And once the inventory is completed, the consultant will provide the city with the report along with their recommendations. And the recommendations will be on priority basis, maybe like priority number one, it's some kind of sign that will be really needed. Uh, so that we at least, you know, um, in the future, uh, maybe next year, we should be able to apply the grant again. For the implementation, for the replacement of those signs that were recommended by the consultant. And this project here is, uh, about eighty thousand dollars. And, um, portion of it, a ten percent of it, is the city matching and has been, uh, the funding has been allocated, uh, for this project. And with that, I conclude my staff report and I'll be very happy to answer any question that you may have.
Okay, thank you for that report. Are there any, um, questions on the report?
I have a question.
I'm sorry, go, go ahead, Pat.
Why didn't we go with the lowest bidder, Oono?
Um, the professional service agreement, we are supposed to go for the qualification-based selection process. This is per Caltrans requirement. So when, when we first, uh, look at all the proposal, we do not look at all the costs. Therefore, we qualify all the professional service first, the company based on the experience, the personnel that they are going to be allocated for the project and all of those. And I-Tourist was the one that really stand up and they have a lot of experience. And they've done a lot of projects, uh, in this facility. Uh, therefore, the staff, uh, selected I-Tourist to do it. And again, because this is a qualification-based, uh, 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 selection process, which is required by the government code as well as Caltrans requirement, therefore, we selected the I-Tourist.
Okay, so you answered around my question. Why didn't we go with the lowest bidder?
Why? Because it's.
AMN Management. They were, they were thirty-one thousand dollars cheaper.
Yes, that's true. I'm gonna, but the qualification for the company that is proposing is not there. They don't have the actual experience to do the inventory that we're looking for. And if you look at the rest of the proposal, they are within the ballpark, actually. It's not, you know, not much. That means that the, the lowest proposal, uh, is not qualified to do that. And again, we selected, we selected the, uh, the company based on the qualifications and before we look at the dollar amount.
Then I.
In fact, I'm gonna, the, the lowest, the lowest proposal, the, the, uh, the proposal itself is not, does not show the qualified experience that they have, uh, previously.
Then I think that should have been stated in your, uh, your agenda item tonight.
Uh, we.
It's, it's, I told you about that. That AMN Management was the lowest bidder but was not qualified for the job.
I'm, I'm sorry, maybe, uh, we did not, but we specified the government code section which specified specifically.
Oono, don't. The council should, uh, we were taught to go with the lowest bidder. If the AMN was, management was not qualified, it should have been in your agenda item tonight, that they were not qualified. That's why you did not pick them.
I see. I'm, I'm so sorry. Maybe I did not clarify that. And you're right. I mean, I should have done that, um, on the report to make it much more clear. I'm so sorry about that.
Okay, I'm done, Robert.
And Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, it's Kevin Chen. Um, I just wanted to, um, provide some further clarification that, um, the process for, um, hiring this consultant. This was for, um, professional engineering services, so it, in essence, it's a, uh, professional contract, uh, as opposed to a, uh, public works contract. Um, with a public works contract, we would then be obligated to go with the lowest bid. However, because that wasn't the process that, um, this contract was being considered under, um, um, there isn't a requirement to go with the lowest bid.
But that's great, Kevin, but he shouldn't still put it in information. Why we didn't go with the lowest bid?
You, you're right.
Yeah.
Councilmember Kearney, I, I sort of done that, I sort of write on the report to indicate that. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Yeah, so we're just make a note of, um, just, just going for it. I mean.
FYI.
Um, this type of report that it would always be good, we'll know upfront why. It does raise the question if you have the lowest responsible, be it why the person wasn't selected, so that we kind of clear on it and don't have to necessarily spend, um, council time on it.
Yes, mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you for that report, Kahono. Um, items, we're still on item number thirteen. Um, any other questions on the report?
Uh.
And I entertain a motion for item number thirteen.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, motion is made by, by Kearney. And I'll sec, I'll second the motion. Cause motion's been made by, um, Kearney and seconded by Paul Miles. Uh, are there any, um, questions? Um, any more debate, I should say? If not, I'm gonna have the, I think, city clerk to, um, give the vote.
And for item thirteen, Mayor Proten Suarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osborne?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Kearney?
Yes.
Mayor Paul Miles?
Yes.
Motion passed, please, five zero.
All right, thank you. Um, is, uh, Mr. Reyes, has he joined us yet?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, this is Michael. I'm back on now. I can, uh, go ahead and go on the staff reports.
All right, let's start with, um, item, um, eleven.
Uh, thank you. Um, I apologize for getting knocked off there. I've been on the meeting the whole time, but, um, I'm losing audio for some reason, so I'll just try to get through this. Um, good evening, Mr. Mayor and distinguished members of the city council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you tonight. The purpose of this staff report is to inform the council about the CARES Act funding that has been appealed, applied for and awarded to the city of Longdale to assist with COVID-nineteen-related costs. And for staff's recommendations as to the best use of these awarded funds. Funding for the CARES Act is based on population and as of today, one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars of the total allocation of four hundred and five thousand dollars has been received by the city. These funds must be used directly for COVID-nineteen-related expenditures and all allocated funds must be spent before December thirty-first of this year. And used to cover costs incurred between March seventeenth and December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty. A large portion of funds will be used to reimburse the city for costs incurred as a result of Project Room Key, such as sheriff's time spent at the Project Room Key Hotels, city attorney costs, and staff time spent providing outreach to the homeless. Additionally, costs will also be used to reimburse the city staff time lost during the mandatory quarantine of one of the city's departments. Additional funds will be allocated for structural improvements to city facilities to limit touch points to prevent and spread, prevent the spread of COVID-nineteen. No-touch entry systems at three-city buildings and physical barriers to limit contact between staff and residents are some of the improvements that are to be implemented. A portion of funds will also be for new computers to increase staff's ability to telework. Lastly, a large portion of funding will be to assist small business owners through a grant program to assist small business owners to help with rent and maintain staff. Entire four hundred and five thousand dollars will be divided into these general categories that were pre-established as eligible fund uses by the federal government. Staff recommends that the city council receive and file this report and will provide further direction to staff regarding the city's CARES Act funding allocations. And I can answer any questions or give some further detail if any way you would like.
Okay, thank you, um, for that, um, report. I am glad to see that we're about to be reimbursed for some expenses that's related to, um, Project Room Key. Um, and outreach to the homeless, so that's, that's, um, better news, I should say. So thank you for, um, that report. Are there any, any other questions on, um, the report? Okay, and then I'm gonna, um, I'm gonna, unless consent, just, uh, file and receive it. Um, matter of city attorney, there's nothing we need to adopt here. We can just file and receive it? Anonymous consent?
No, there's nothing else you have to do. You can go ahead, proceed.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you for that report. Let's proceed with, um, item twelve.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this is Michael again. Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and distinguished members of the city council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you this evening. This staff report is to seek approval for the purchase of an automated license plate reader for use by LASD to replace the outdated license plate reader purchased in two thousand and thirteen. Automated license plate readers attach to sheriff patrol vehicles and use high-speed cameras to automatically capture all license plates in its field of view. Instantly notifying deputies of stolen vehicles and vehicles used in criminal activity. ALPRs have proven invaluable in assisting deputies with combating criminal activity involving vehicles. The ALPR unit purchased in two thousand and thirteen has been in use for seven years, two years beyond its recommended lifespan, and will put out of service this year. Improvements to camera quality as well as speed by which data can retrieve, be retrieved are part of the reason a new device is necessary. The sheriff's department with the use of the ALPR has been responsible for the recovery of numerous stolen vehicles over the past few years. In speaking with Sergeant Nitz earlier today, this device is routinely responsible for two to three stolen vehicles recovered each month. Since the start of the coronavirus pandemic and the governor's safer-at-home orders, crimes involving vehicles are dramatically on the rise. Having an ALPR with the ability to read hundreds of license plates gives deputies an important advantage when fighting crime. The ALPR is regularly in use on a daily basis in the city of Longdale and its ability to gather information and recognize vehicles associated with criminal activity give deputies a tremendous advantage when doing patrols. This device saves considerable time for deputies and money for the city. The cost of the new ALPR will be twenty-three thousand, six hundred dollars, which will be paid by the sheriff's department and charged back to the city over a period of five years. The initial five thousand dollars will be paid in this fiscal year with forty-six fifty due annually in the subsequent four years. Funds are currently available through the California Law Enforcement Equipment Fund and staff proposes the following budget adjustment to increase appropriations of five thousand dollars. Staff recommends the city council approve this increase in appropriations to use the California Law Enforcement Equipment Fund for the initial payment of an automated license plate reader. And I can answer any questions if you have any.
Robert, I have a question.
For that report, um, who's, who's Osborne?
Jim, Jim, yeah.
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, go ahead, council.
Thank you, Michael. Um, I don't know, you were here when, when we saw the first one. And I think, uh, Pat, Robert, maybe Dan too, you remember, one was, uh, brought to City Hall parked out front sort of as a demonstration.
Right.
Many years ago. Uh, I think it was back when Matt Dendo was captain. And my question, Michael, you may not be able to answer, I don't know, but I'm just curious, was the arrangement for that purchase the same as this arrangement?
Uh, good evening, Councilman Osborne. Uh, I'm, I'm not aware of the, how the previous one was purchased. I, I probably wouldn't be the best one to answer that. Um, I can tell you that, uh, the reason for the new need for another one is that the warranty has expired on the previous one. And it's cost prohibitive to continue to fix and upgrade the, the older used.
Yeah, I, I understand that and I support, uh, the purchase. I was just curious if it was the same, uh, procedure for that initial one and I, I don't know, Robert, Robert or Pat might remember, I think it was about eight years ago or something like that.
Plus.
And we had a demonstration of it right on the steps there at City Hall.
Councilmember Osborne.
Yeah, I just, uh, I supported. I just wanted to see, uh, if it was the same, uh, arrangement.
Okay.
Councilmember Osborne. Mr. Mayor, it's, uh, Kevin Chen. Um, just in response to Councilmember Osborne's question, um, I had a conversation with, uh, Leo about the, the previous or the current, uh, ALPR. And, uh, that was purchased in two thousand and thirteen. Um, and, um, the cost for that ALPR was split over five years, uh, which is similar to how they, um, intend to go about. Um, the purchase and, um, um, paying for the, the future ALPR. So I'm not sure if that answers your question, but, um, it was the same in terms of, in terms of the payments.
Well, if you say it's a similar, uh, arrangement, then, uh, I, I support it. If there's no other questions, Robert, I'll make a motion.
I have one question.
Okay, I do have a question. Go ahead, um, um, Pat.
Uh, Michael.
Good evening, Councilman. Sorry, sir.
Available. Do we use that during the year or can we use, put that all towards this and only, oh, eight thousand dollars? This fund, the California.
There are available funds beyond the five thousand. Um, in speaking with Marla, we decided the five thousand upfront might be just the smartest way to pay for it rather than to exhaust the entire, um, amount that are in that fund. Um, the entire amount is about fifteen thousand dollars, so it wouldn't cover the entire cost.
Right.
We'd have to come up with additional costs from, from another place. That's why we opted to just pay in, in, in payments.
So do we use that fund during the year besides this or it's just a?
Uh, we, we can, uh, whenever, uh, uh, funding is needed and, and equipment is needed. It has specific purposes, so.
I just wanted.
But this would, yeah, this would be a category that would be eligible.
Okay. That's it, Robert. Thank you.
Okay, um, let me make sure I understand, um, although we're putting up the money to buy the, the unit, essentially, the, um, the county, the sheriff's department is gonna be paying us back. So essentially, it's gonna zero out to where we're not actually paying for it? Is that what the arrangement is?
Mr. Mayor, it's Kevin Chen again. Um, so, um, this, uh, the ALPR will be paid through the city's annual contract with the sheriff's department. So, uh, we, we will pay for it through our contract, um, on a monthly basis, so the five thousand dollars will be. five thousand dollars will be, um, spread out over the next twelve months, or over the twelve-month period, we're already into the fiscal year, but it's intended to be spread out throughout the year, so we will essentially be making monthly payments towards the five thousand dollars.
Okay, okay, so we're making a payment for the, the, basically for the service of it?
Well, we're actually paying for the, the actual equipment. So, um, the, the actual equipment is, you know, as Michael mentioned, twenty-four thousand dollars. Um, so the sheriff's department will be paying for it, but they are only expecting, um, you know, um, incremental payments over, uh, for each year. So for the first year, five thousand, and then, uh, the next four years, four thousand six hundred and change.
So, I'm just trying to make sure, so who actually owns the unit?
Well, um, I guess we own it technically because we're paying for it, but it's gonna be, um, mounted on a, um, sheriff's patrol vehicle. Um, so they will be, you know, it will be, um, in their care, they will be maintaining it and operating it, so, um, it will be for them to use, we won't actually be, you know, using the, the device, we're just paying for it.
Which is like a lot of other things we do.
Okay, I was just, I was just curious, also, um, has there been any discussions on, um, any, um, civil liberties implications of using, um, the, the scanner, the license plate, I know what the intended use is, but if someone.
Uh, good, good evening, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Mr. Mayor, good evening, this is Michael again, I can address that a little bit. Um, can everybody hear me okay? I know we, I've been kind of dropping in and out. Um, but, uh, in, in, in researching it, um, that was a question that was brought up, some of the challenges, uh, uh, say that deputies are getting, um, unlawful access to information about, uh, drivers, um, that's not actually an accurate statement, um, the device reads license plates, uh, a hundred per hour, something like that, but this is information deputies have access to anyway. If they physically entered every license plate, they could do just the same thing, none of the information is additional to what they already have access to. Um, this simply allows them to, to, um, uh, access a lot of, yeah, it's really just a system, and rather than wasting time, I mean, ninety-nine percent of vehicles are gonna come back with nothing, um, that's illegal about them, nothing, no violations. Um, it's specifically gonna be targeting, um, stolen vehicles, uh, vehicles that can be recovered, and vehicles that have warrants or warrants on them that were used in crimes. Uh, additionally, information is held for a number of years, so if it comes back to, um, if you have a crime that's being investigated and you want to put a criminal at a location from years prior, if a, a search of this can detect that that vehicle was at that location that they suspected he was involved in, so there's a number of uses beyond just recovering stolen vehicles.
Right. And I would add, Michael, we're seeing an increase in, in auto theft as reported by the sheriff's department. This is something you want.
Correct, this is, it is a very helpful tool for the department, I, I don't think there's any real civil liberty issues with it. Um, and again, it's just, it's just accessing information they already have the access to.
Right, instead of punching it in and waiting for the response, this device does it for them.
Correctly.
Yeah, I get the intended, the intended use, but I wanted to hear about the civil liberties, I understand that it's a good tool for law enforcement to have, and, yeah, instead of punching in a thousand, you can get a thousand in almost instantly, I still want to hear about the civil liberties. So, thank you for, um, bringing that to me, um, Michael.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, so with that, we're at, we're still at item number twelve, um.
My motion's still standing.
Well, make, so the motion's been made now by, um, Councilman Osborne, and, um, we won't like to second that motion.
I will, this is Councilman Kearney.
Okay, and seconded by Councilman Pat Kearney, that we approve the purchase of the, uh, automatic license plate reader. Um, is there any discussion on the motion? Any or none, let's have the vote, please.
Thank you for item twelve, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Swires.
Yes.
Councilmember Osborne?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Kearney?
Yes.
Mayor Paul Miles?
Yes.
Motion passed, five zero.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, we're now at item number fourteen on our agenda, um, concerning opposing the county measure, Measure J, let's have the, um, staff report.
Yes, good evening again, uh, Mr. Mayor and, uh, members of the City Council, it's Kevin Chen. Uh, I will be presenting this report. Um, this is an item that was brought up at your August third City Council meeting by City Councilmember Osborne. Um, and as you may recall, on, um, August fourth, the, uh, County Board of Supervisors approved a ballot measure which later became known as Measure J for the ballot on November third, uh, the number, November third election. And Measure J, as proposed, would, um, involve a charter amendment to the county's charter, um, and would set aside approximately four to five hundred million dollars each year from their budget, um, for, uh, various social services programs. Um, and, um, the, these funds would not be, um, available for, uh, various county, um, law enforcement agencies, including the sheriff's department, district attorney's office, probation department, and superior court. Now, while, um, we believe, um, the funding for the social services programs are well-intended, um, what, what, what's also clear is that, um, this would mean that, um, various, uh, county law enforcement agencies, including the sheriff's department, would see some decrease in funding, um, and according to, um, the county's, um, chief executive office, that could be at over one hundred and fourteen million dollars a year, uh, beginning in, uh, July two thousand twenty-one. So considering the fact that, um, uh, there would be cuts to law enforcement, particularly the sheriff's department, um, on items that would be outside of, um, what the city contracts for, uh, these are still items that, um, are very necessary and, um, are, are needed for, for law enforcement. And, uh, as a result, we believe that, uh, that would have an impact on crime in not only our community but throughout the county. So, based on that, uh, staff is recommending that the council, um, um, uh, approve this resolution opposing Measure J. And with that, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you for that report, item fourteen, are there any, um, discussion on item fourteen?
Robert, it's Jim, I just have a, just a brief comment. Uh, thanks, Kevin, I think that was a very good, concise, uh, analysis you just gave. And, uh, this is one of those things that we're seeing crime now starting to increase, and to just take the opposite action, defund law enforcement, all that does is exacerbate the problem as time goes forward. So, I know other communities are, are opposing this as well, I think this was just a politically motivated thing that the county did, but I, I strongly oppose Measure J, I think we need to pass this resolution, and that's it.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um, are there any other discussions on, um, on the item, item fourteen?
Well, well, there's no other discussion, I'll make a motion to go with staff expedition, and I know.
I have a comment.
Out to us, and I know PPOA has reached out to myself, and I saw, signed both their papers to oppose Measure J already.
Okay, let, let's have, let's have comments, um, from, um, Mayor Pro Tem Swires, uh, before we have the motion.
Just a quick comment, I had seen an interview with Sheriff Danuava, and he brought up how, um, the board of supervisors themselves have security guards, so it's a little ironic for them to be, you know, voting for something that can impact everybody else's safety, and they themselves don't go by those same, um, guidelines, so I support the opposition.
Here, here. Okay, with that, uh.
I'll second Pat's motion, Robert.
So the motion's been made by, uh, Pat Kearney, seconded by Mr. Osborne, is there any discussion on the motion for item fourteen? Any debate on the motion? Any or none, I'm gonna have the city clerk to give the vote, please.
For item fourteen, Mayor Pro Tem Swires?
Yes.
Councilmember Osborne?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Absolutely, yes.
Councilmember Kearney?
Yes.
Mayor Paul Miles?
Yes.
Motion passed, five zero.
Thank you, sir. Let's move on to item, um, H, it's the city manager's report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I won't have any reports for tonight, thank you.
Okay, we expect the extra long one at the next meeting. Okay. I don't, I, I, um, I, I just want the city council members, let's start with, um, Councilman Osborne.
Oh, thank you, Robert, no, I, I don't have anything, man.
Okay, thanks, councilman. Councilman Reed?
No, just, uh, glad we all survived the hot Memorial Day weekend, the only thing I participated in was a special meeting that we had on the first.
Very good, thank you, sir. Councilman Pat Kearney?
I have nothing to report, but I have two questions, maybe I can get some answers sometime this week. What's the ETA at City Hall, the first question? And what do we, what do we find out about the community center closing that down, about different, I know we're still paying a lot of money every month for, uh, electricity over there, so I'd like to have some answers soon.
What was your first question, how did you get that?
ETA on opening up City Hall?
Oh, ETA, okay.
And then that one about the community center and le- electricity we're wasting over there.
Okay, I got it.
Okay, and that's it.
Okay, Madam Pro Tem, I'm here from, um, Bernadette Swires.
I have nothing to report.
Nothing to report, let me write this down, Bernadette, nothing to report. Yes, that's with you. Okay, and, um, let's see, um, I did attend the regular meeting of the sanitation district, um, nothing really exciting happening there, but, um, necessary business otherwise. Uh, I seem like I did attend something else, but I can't quite recall what you, so maybe the next meeting, uh, elaborate if it's necessary, so with that, that's all I have to report. With that, we don't have a close session tonight, and so our next regular scheduled meeting of the Lawndale City Council will be held at six thirty PM on Monday, September the twenty-first. It's now seven fifteen, and this meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone.